A village council virtual study session for August 11th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The first order of business is public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody who is logged in either on the phone or virtually can address village council on any item that is not on the agenda. Kristen, do you have anybody who wishes to address? Council on a non-agenda item?
No, President Rents, there is no one in the virtual meeting in attendance, and there were no written comments provided in advance.
Awesome. Okay. Well, then we can move ahead to the main program this evening, which is the Winnetka Local Business Sales Tax Rebate Economic Relief Program. And you can't tell a bureaucrat named that. Is there an acronym that I'm missing on that?
We'll take that as a compliment.
That's what the challenge and the policy direction is, name the acronym.
You're putting it in well, Liz. That's all I can say.
Actually, if you L B S T R program, that's the lobster program.
Lobster program.
There we go. Lobster. That's what we're going to call it. Lobster.
Like a New England thing.
It's cooked.
I have a question. There was an email that came in that probably everybody was copied on. Do we need to read that at all or no?
No, we'll address it during the presentation, John.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. The local business community has suffered significant losses during the COVID-19 pandemic. The village has been providing continuous marketing support, resource sharing, and technical assistance throughout the pandemic crisis. Tonight, we will discuss expanding these benefits to include financial aid in the form of a local sales tax rebate for local Winnetka businesses. Village staff has developed a proposal to facilitate council discussion on the issue. Kristen and Liz will pick it away, but I just wanted to give you guys a little backdrop. You know, I've been getting a lot of correspondence, phone calls, texts from quite a few, and I'm talking 15 to 20 businesses here in town that have been pleading for all sorts of help. And at first I felt, you know, my patented response to them was, you know, they were comparing us to Willmette, to Glencoe, and to Northbrook, so on. A lot of these communities impose some sort of either restaurant or straight sales tax add-on. And so, you know, what I told everybody is, we don't charge that tax, so we really don't have a pot of money to give back to you because we didn't take it in the first place. And interestingly enough, what I did hear is a lot of the merchants really didn't seem to care whether we added a retail tax or not. That's not for tonight's conversation. But it was, I thought for sure that even a conversation about a retail tax would have created a stir and, you know, but it's not coming from the retailers. We still have our residents to concern ourselves with, of course. So I do them that I was giving them a competitive advantage and so on and so forth. But, you know, a lot of my tenants in my retail spaces, I've been hearing the same thing from a lot of them. Most of the people I have, I do have a couple nationals, but most of them are local businesses or smaller regional operators that have really been hit hard by this. So using my professional experience along with what I'm hearing here in town. And so I turned to Rob and asked if there was anything we could do. We spitballed this for several weeks, and, you know, I came up with a lot of lame-brained ideas about becoming a bank and things of this nature with loan programs and so on and so forth. And it became pretty clear that the administration and the speed with which we could employ some of those concepts was just out of the question. So left to their own devices, Rob and Kristen and Liz, and I think Josie even probably chimed in on some of this sit-down and came back to me with an idea. So with that said, I'd like to turn it over to them to present with you, to you, what they've come up with. I think it's a super idea, but certainly it's something for you guys to bat around and decide if you want to do it. So Kristen, you want to start out, or Liz, or who's doing what?
I'm going to start out. Thank you very much. So Kristen's starting up our PowerPoint here. And thank you so much for having us speak tonight. So we'll call it the rebate program, the Local Business Sales Tax Rebate. It's our economic relief program. It's a proposal. Kristen, next slide. Thank you. So I'd just like to give you guys some context through where we are and talk about the impact that the COVID-19 pandemic has had on our businesses here in town. We've got about 192 businesses here, and that counts the commercial businesses, our brick and mortar. And based on the state's definition of what an essential and non-essential business is, when the state closed those non-essential businesses on March 21st through to May 29th, that meant that 112 of those businesses were temporarily closed. And that was across the board in our different districts. So that's almost 60% of our businesses that closed. That includes our restaurants, who were essential, but they remain closed to any kind of dine-in. They did get to do takeout and carry-out. However, there was significant loss of revenue for every business in town for those 69 days. And after May 29th, we did have all businesses able to open with restrictions. In talking to businesses in Winnetka, we have heard people say they've lost up to 80% of revenue in that March, April, May time span compared to last year. We had a retailer say that she was getting 1/10th of the business. And we've had people tell us that there are some days with no sales, nothing. They walk out of there. And it's never happened to them before. So we're hearing the impact in Winnetka, Illinois, obviously across the country, but that's sort of a snapshot of where we are. Next slide, please. We did have businesses able to reopen when we moved into Phase 3. Now we're currently in Phase 4. And in reflecting on that time, we've had most people say June was better than May and July was better than June, but again, compared to last year, it just pales in comparison. And when you talk about small businesses, these are typically financially fragile. So a typical business has about $10,000 in expenses a month and about on the good and two months of cash and reserve. Some have one, and again, the ones that are more fragile have less than a month of cash on hand. There's always financial challenges that are involved in running any kind of small business. This pandemic in particular, because of the closures, has slashed sales. Expenses, particularly rent, has been very hard for businesses to meet. In talking to property owners, landlords, and tenants and businesses, we're hearing sort of a combination of how rent has been approached. Some are obeying the rent. Some are negotiating with businesses. Others are landlords are telling businesses, you can break your lease now with no penalty or pay now for what you're owed. Lots of businesses have not been able to make it. There are significant employee payroll challenges from health insurance benefits. A lot of our businesses have had to let employees go. Some businesses, for example, Golden Needle Taylor and Cleaner by the Grand in West Elm. She owns two businesses and she had manager and employees. She's been in business 24 years. By this time, she is visiting the businesses. She's had to let all her employees go, and now she's working 12 hours a day. So it's been a significant challenge. In addition to that, some already have loans, existing lines of credit, you know, and our rent is quite high. They've got utilities and, you know, inventory wrapped up, so they have to pay suppliers. That's sort of where businesses are generally. And then the pandemic came and really sort of slashed that that ability for them to meet all of those monthly expenses. Next slide. So given that context, we were able to develop a program that addressed what they needed, sort of meet businesses where they were. We ramped up very quickly. Marketing and promotion program, lot of social media campaigns. We increased our social media engagement by a lot. Hundreds of followers were joining in on what we were seeing. That was driving business to their online stores. And as businesses have opened up, we continue to drive people to their brick and mortar stores. We offered a lot of technical assistance. That was through emails, socially distant in-person visits, virtual phone calls. We provided constant resource updates through our website, through e-development, through any resource we could get. A lot of it was communication, and it was that support. We did offer loan and grant assistance. I spent hours researching available grants, making sure people knew about that, really getting it out to people. The village expedited outdoor dining permitting and the liquor service process. We were able to expedite and open 12 new and expanded patios in addition to opening eight existing ones. So we've got 20 restaurants that have outdoor seating compared to last year, so that's almost double. It's something that we really focused on. Dining in Winnetka is wonderful in the summertime. We also deferred utility bills. We waived late fees. We offered payment plans. We pushed deadlines on our parking permit renewals. The outcome of all of this is that there were 33 Winnetka businesses who did secure PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program, the federal loan, of more than $150,000 in town. So there is money flowing into town. Businesses are beginning to get back on their feet again. Summer is better than spring. We are looking ahead to fall. It's uncertain what the business environment is going to be like. We're not sure what will happen after the outdoor dining season closes in the fall. So that sort of brings us up to where we are and how impactful what our current resources have been. So I'll turn it over to Kristen to talk about the program and why we think it's a good resource for our businesses.
Thanks, Liz. So as Chris had mentioned, we have consistently received from the local business community requests for financial support from the village. I'm sure they appreciate Liz, the Economic Development Department and the staff and what we've been able to do. And when our neighbors, as Chris mentioned, put in programs early on, there was a question that came from the community, why is Winnetka not putting in a program right now? And Winnetka planned a fiscally responsible, cautious approach, and we were carefully monitoring the duration and the severity of the pandemic's economic impact. As Chris mentioned, we do not have a home rule sales tax in Winnetka, which was the source of a lot of the funding from our neighboring communities. In addition, when we started to assess the impacts on the village's budget, as you recall, several months ago, Tim Slough, the Finance Director, presented projections of a $4 million decline in the village's revenue budget. So in response to that, the village needed to propose expenditure cuts and delay capital projects to address the shortfall in the village budget. What happened in July, and what you'll see in detail at the August 18th meeting, is that the 2019 audited financial results for the village came in, and what we saw was the general funds had a surplus due to continued conservative budgeting, along with favorable revenue and operating expenditure experience. So when we were challenged to come up with a program to provide financial assistance, we believe that the best opportunity is the Sales Tax Rebate Economic Relief Program, which will provide assistance to these local businesses who have suffered economic loss due to the pandemic. At the top level, the key components of the program are to distribute 50% of the village's share. And I bolded that because the village receives 1% of the 9% that is paid by a customer at a business in Winnetka. So we're talking about that 1% that we receive. Half of it would be available to be rebated of the amount received in 2019. This would result in immediate cash for those short-term financial needs. The total budget for the program would not exceed $400,000. And based on preliminary analysis, we believe about 90 local businesses would qualify for this program. The funding would come from that general fund surplus as a result of those strong financial results in 2019. Eligibility, we looked at some key components of who we were targeting with this program. Businesses need to have a physical location within Winnetka. They need to generate sales tax revenue. The funding for this comes from the sales tax revenue, that 1%. We also put a cap that the revenue that was generated by the business could not have exceeded $4 million in 2019. And there's no chains or franchises, private clubs, home occupations, or local government. We excluded specifically local government business operations because there are some operations, for example, at the Nutria High School, their shop that they have there. And the business must have been in operation in 2019. That's the metric we're using. So the operational sales tax must have been generated. And the final component is they still need to be in business as of the participation in the program. The process, we envisioned an administration jointly by economic development and finance. The application form would be a very streamlined process so that it could be efficient for the businesses. We would ask for a minimum of information to ensure that they qualified under the criteria. And then the internal approval would happen through the village manager, the administratively approved. The rebate check would be coming from the village, so it would be included in the warrant list. And as you know, the warrants are approved in total at the council meeting. So that's where the council approval would come in. We envisioned the deadline for applications to be December 1st. And the reason for that would be, obviously, we want to get this funding to the businesses as quickly and efficiently as possible, but also we want the disbursements to be complete by the end of the 2025 year for an accounting cutoff. And our hope is the outcome of this program would support those local businesses who need it most so that they can stay open and thrive in Winnetka and contribute positively to a strong local economy, which would benefit the community at large. So at this time, Liz and I are happy to entertain any questions. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. If at any time you need a slide back, just let me know.
Okay, what I'm hoping to do is, if you guys have questions of Liz or Kristen, we'll go through those first. Then I'll ask Kristen to open up any public comment, and then we'll come back and begin deliberation. Go for it, Penny.
My question relates to the demonstration of how funds from the village are spent. Is there going to be any requirement that they demonstrate that they expended the funds towards the, you know, what we had indicated we hoped it would be in terms of rent or payroll or whatever? How is that going to be verified?
So, under the original provisions of the program, we're not requiring that the villages present receipts to do an audit after the fact. We do have a provision in there that states that the businesses must comply with the rules of the agreement and that any breach would require that they, you know, return the funds. So we were trying to make this as streamlined and administratively friendly as possible.
So there isn't any verification? I mean, I agree relative to the application to be streamlined, but relative to verifying how the funds are ultimately spent, there is no check on that?
Trusty Lanfier, I'm going to jump in real quick. We're going to ask that they stipulate on the application and then sign it. And at this point, the administrative ability to go back and double-check that, we thought would be probably not worth the effort, given the rebate program. So at this point, we're not going back and asking for receipts or any documentation of that effect. And Kristen, you can confirm that if I'm...
No, that's correct because we are broad in what we are suggesting, that the immediate cash needs be payroll, payers, service providers, et cetera. From an accounting standpoint, I think it can be difficult to specifically relate when a receipt comes in, that that receipt actually went to a certain extent.
Okay, so I'm not, since this finance is not my area, I don't know how similar kinds of programs are administered to ensure for our taxpayers that the funds are used appropriately. Again, it's just a check on behalf of our residents. So, you know, we can talk about that more generally. The other question I had is, is there, and pardon me if I missed it, would everybody be entitled to the same amount of money? Or how are you going to determine how much money a certain business would receive?
That's a great question. So each business generates revenue that comes to the village, that 1% of the 9% that's paid by a customer.
So that...
What each business would be eligible for is half of what they generated. So it would vary by business. And so we would specifically give them back half of what they had generated. That's why we're calling it a rebate rather than a grant. Because you are eligible for half of the sales tax revenue that was received by the village.
Okay, so it would be specific for each business, it's 50% of whatever it was you generated the year before?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? Rob?
Unmute, Rob?
You're muted, Rob.
Okay. You had mentioned that 33 businesses received PPP of 100, did you say of 150,000 or more?
Yes, 150,000 or more.
Out of how many businesses in the village? I mean, what's our count?
Well, the counted say it's a little difficult because we have so many home businesses. So the 192 is a count that we have of businesses that are in the commercial district. And according to the SBA, the village actually received, there was over 250 businesses credited to the 60093 zip code in Winnetka. However, to parse out which those account for home businesses or commercial businesses, actually, that information isn't supplied, so it would require more, a lot more digging and FOIA. But the information...
Just looking for rough numbers. That's helpful. So 33 out of, I won't use 192 because I'm looking for commercial kind of retail businesses.
Right, commercial retail. That's right. And there's also the economic impact, the disaster loans as well. There's no numbers right now. A lot of it is based on what businesses are willing to share. We had a lot of conversations with people, and even after they received loans, we didn't know because they, sometimes it can be uncomfortable, awkward. There are also grants out there. So it's a little, that number is a little hard to quantify itself. But we do know that 33 got more than 150, and there's a different range. Some got over 500,000.
Wow. Are we, we're giving them rebates? I guess that's my, that's why I'm curious about, and the businesses, and I think I talked to Rob a little bit about this, about the businesses that did not get like Golden Needle used as an example. Did they even apply for PPP? Do they have, some of these businesses have the know-how? Some of the smaller businesses really know how to do this, something we can, you know, maybe a lot more impactful to them if we can help them do PPP versus give them a few thousand dollars. I mean, I'm a big fan of trying to do this, don't get me wrong, but I just wonder if there's some of these businesses that are struggling. Do we know, have they even applied? Or do they know how to apply or what's been going on?
Sure. So those that are eligible are those that paid for sales tax. But there, you'll see, there's a cap. We've got service businesses that don't pay sales tax. Our beauty salons, our spas, they don't. They were the ones that weren't able to open. You can't do online sales for that. So for those almost 70 days, that was a challenge for them. They were able to, some were able to apply in following up with people. Some didn't get the loan because their employees are contract. Some businesses didn't feel comfortable applying for a loan. Some wanted to look for grants. That was just, some already had line credit, and they knew they weren't going to be able to pay back additional loans. So it was sort of a mixed bag of who was able to do it or not. And, you know, Suzie from Golden Needle, for example, you know, someone who, there were a few that I did some really hands-on. Most businesses, after receiving some information, either in an email or in our newsletter, went to their accountant, went to their lawyer, gathered that data, that application, and sent it in. You know, sat down with Suzie socially distant, and we applied. And we applied for the Facebook grant, and we applied for the Red Backpack grant. This is someone who didn't have an online presence at all. That's part of what we were doing was encouraging people to embrace that. Then on the other side, we've got sort of the spectrum, people that have thousands of followers on social media. They're much more savvy. They already have that online presence. They are still struggling. Others are still struggling.
One thing I will add, Rob, is those people that have access to good banking relationships and good professional advice from legal, both legal and accounting, tended to score really well with respect to rewards on the PPP.
Right.
Those that didn't have those sort of resources available, and we're trying to develop them on the fly, had a much more difficult time of doing it. And I think the important thing that Liz brought up was, a lot of people are very, you know, debt adverse. And that the idea of taking on debt when they're generally cash businesses that they live off of was really uncomfortable for them. The EDIL, you know, the economic disaster loans were a little bit easier, but generally, those aren't considered to be forgivable loans. So even though access to them was a little bit easier in the application, the fact that they weren't ever contemplated as being forgivable scared people off of those as well. So it's tough for these little business guys, you know. Restaurants seem to really knock it out of the park. Liz, I don't know if that's what your experience has been, but I know my restaurants all got huge amounts of money relative to their annual income. But they also had really good financial and legal advice on it, so.
They do, and some of our restaurants have been really innovative. They've been creative. They do have reserves. But some of our restaurants didn't plan that far ahead. And some of our retailers didn't even know how to access their customers. Some were relying on the foot traffic that we've had since they opened 10, 15 years. So when this happened and no one was able to come to their store, they're really challenged. And when we were developing this program, we looked at it and, you know, trying to think, well, any, what type of financial assistance would help? And based on conversations... And based on conversations with people, part of it was anything would help, especially going forward. Unsure what the fall looks like, there are a lot of nervous businesses out there. And we've really pushed our support for restaurants, we're really well-known for it. You know, Bruno Abate from Toco has a lot of people out there on Chestnut Court, the streets closed. There's a lot of people out there, it's wonderful. He's like, what happens in October? Am I gonna, are people gonna go inside? So, you know, he's someone who would, you know, who would benefit.
Yeah, I'll just say, I've worked a lot of PPP loans and some other reasons I heard that people avoided them. You know, they're only forgivable, i- it's, first of all, circumstances under which they're forgivable is insanely complicated. But the sixty forty rule, sixty percent of the loan had to be used for payroll costs. And then there were rules on top of that, seventy-five, you had to maintain seventy-five percent of your payroll. There were sort of look back and look forward provisions for, you know, what you were using to determine that. So aside from the complexity, the reality was if you had relatively lower personnel costs and higher rent costs, loan forgiveness was not on the radar for you, and that may well describe a number of our businesses. The other thing is if you're looking beyond July thirty-one at your survival, a lot of businesses were thinking we're gonna have to make cuts to personnel to survive beyond July thirty-one, which could, you know, affect their eligibility for forgiveness. So those were some common reasons I saw as well.
Other questions?
Yeah, I've got one to ma, want to wait till later, but when I looked at last week's weekly report that comes out on Fridays, and I look on page twenty-three of it, it talks about June nineteen, June two thousand nineteen year-to-date sales tax, I guess collected or whatever, or presented, was five hundred eighty-one thousand. June twenty twenty year-to-date sales tax is six hundred and eighteen thousand. So the sale taxes through June are actually better than last year. So I don't mind the program we're discussing. But I think part of the application process should show your sales taxes through the time of application versus last year. Because you're, it may not be as bad as you think on some businesses.
Let me guess, Grand Foods?
Well, I don't know. I'm not sure where those tax dollars came from.
Yeah.
But it's, I just something I saw that I kind of caught my eye, that maybe part of the application process is you have to have less sales tax paid this year than last year because that's your sales.
Yeah.
Just because you were close for some reason.
Yeah. I'm promoting Tim, boss finance director, he's been in the audience and, and I'm promoting him now. So that he can help add some, some commentary to this. Part of the, um, tiny difference may have been with the delay and when the sales taxes were due. Because there was an extension through the state as well. But I'm gonna turn it over to Tim.
Yeah, so the, the June, um, report, it should be noted is on a cash basis. And that's comparing, uh, sales tax received today versus last year's to date. And, and if you look at it on an accrual basis, I guess there's a couple of things that are skewing the numbers. First of all, pre-COVID, January and February were very good months for sales tax collections and also the actual amounts generated for those months. So when a, a business has a sale in January, they remit it to the state in February, and then the state remits it back to us in March or April. So there's a delay in when we actually get the money. So it's the, the impact of, you know, the March, April slowdown, the subsequent slowdown isn't yet fully reflected in the financials. Plus, it's being buffered a little bit by the, the good months of January and February. Uh, so when I present next week, um, you know, the numbers for sales taxes, you'll start to see the impact a little bit more clearly.
Is there a good way to balance it out on the application process to make sure that there is a legitimate loss of sales, I guess? Even if January was good, you know, that should help get it through an extra month maybe or something.
You know, that was a conversation we had and with, you know, you're talking about, you mentioned the grand. I mean, some of our essential businesses, um, stayed open and that became, I think that was really important. That said, based on what the state recommended as a stay-at-home order, there were still less customers during that time than there would have been, and then there were from last year. So if they did see a, you know, quote, increase from, you know, the, in April as opposed to March, it was still less than they normally had. And so it's something we did talk about. Should businesses display, should they explain that they had, you know, prove that they're, they did suffer, that they did have some kind of loss? And when we looked at it, based on what people said, overall, nearly everyone we talked to, everyone we talked to said, we got hit, some way worse than others. But it's just a matter of course in all of this. The closure happened and there has been impact.
And, and thanks Liz for that clarification. One other point would be, as part of the program requirements, we capped the annual sales number at four million dollars to really target those locally-owned, um, smaller businesses. So someone like a Grand Foods is not going to qualify for the program anyway because they would exceed that threshold. So when we looked at, um, some initial drafts of the program, we did think about requiring, um, sales tax return information for the first or second quarter of the year compared to this year. But when we looked at it overall, just intuitively thinking about the businesses that were targeting, those small local businesses that were non-essential that had to close. When you look at sixty-nine days of having the doors shut, um, without the ability to operate, unless you're looking at a grocery store or someone with a huge online presence, I think just intuitively you can make the assertion that they're going to have experienced a decline in revenue.
So, so with that in mind, what do you think the average, um, rebate might be?
Well, the average rebate.
You know, using a fifty percent, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I was saying the average rebate is forty-five hundred dollars. And so I guess my question to, and John, I'm just kind of dovetailing your, your topic here. My question to Liz and Kristin is, so forty-five hundred is the average. That's one point one one, if everyone got the same, it'd be a little over one percent. What's the range here in terms of, you know, percentage of this four hundred thousand? If everything was, and I know we may not get to four hundred thousand, we might get over four hundred thousand. But, you know, if everyone, if we got to four hundred thousand, you know, are we talking about some businesses getting fifteen thousand and some getting a thousand? What's, what's the range here?
That's a, um, great question, and we did not put a floor on what the rebate could be. So there could be a business that could get a hundred dollars, and it could be a business that could receive twenty thousand dollars.
Well, but, but Kristin, you have, you have ninety businesses.
Yeah.
So that, that's our universe, and you, you have a sense of what their sales is?
Yes.
So you, you, you should, I mean, what?
So the, the lowest would be, the range, the range would be from a hundred dollars is the lowest.
Okay.
To, um, approximately twenty thousand dollars. It's half of forty thousand, which is the maximum. And we have businesses within that range. So to your point, um, the metric of average, while you can calculate that, really, it's going to vary because it's not something that's going to be based on like a grant program. It's going to be half of that one percent that the business generated, which could be as low as a hundred dollars, it could be as high as approaching twenty thousand.
Do, do you have a sense of, I'm sorry to, to just barge in here, but do you have a sense of what the, the median is on this? So the average is forty-five hundred. What's the middle, the middle business receiving? I mean, is this kind of top-heavy, I guess is my question?
Yeah, it's a little hard to tell right now, yeah.
I haven't calculated the median, but we certainly could.
Hey Bob? Would you, are you, are you advocating for just an average payout or a flat, a flat amount that would go to any business?
No, I think what I'm ad, what, I'm not advocating for anything, I'm just trying to get the context here. And actually, it jumped my first question, which sort of got off of trustee Apitop's question of the hundred and ninety-two businesses. We get down to ninety. I was kind of curious how we got, you know, the hundred businesses that didn't qualify. Obviously, the Walgreens and the, the Grand and the Starbucks, we, we know those. I, you know, I don't know how we, we eliminate the hundred, so we get down to the ninety. And I, and you know, Chris, I just, I think it's important that we have this totally understood in context. I'm, I'm in support of this program, don't get me.
I like the, yeah, actually, Bob, I actually like the, the average idea, that's something that didn't occur to me.
But a hundred dollars, I mean.
Yeah, right. What's that gonna do?
That's a slant.
And, and I don't know with that, if we went, if we went to some kind of floor, Kristin, if we went to some kind of floor that was meaningful, I was a thousand dollars or whatever, you know, what would that do to the, the total? And, you know, I guess that gets to the question of the four hundred thousand. And Rob, Ben and I had a conversation on that today, you know, how set in stone is that four hundred thousand? You know, is there, is there room to set a floor or whatever to make this meaningful to some of these businesses that wouldn't, you know, sort of crash through that four hundred thousand figure? I don't know the answer on that, but I was trying to get to where we stood on these ninety businesses and what it meant to them.
Yeah. I, I think, Bob, can I have one more thing onto you? Which was, of those ninety businesses, how many of them got PPP payments? How many were actually, are getting relief already and do we know that?
Let me try and answer the questions in order as I heard them and let me know if I missed anything, okay? So, um, to your first question about how did we get down to the ninety businesses? So, um, one of the key provisions in the proposed program is that you have to be sales tax revenue generating. Because that's the source of where this money is coming from. So all of the service businesses who do not pay sales tax are not part of the program. So to your point, in addition to the chains like the Walgreens and the McDonald's, you have the elimination of the service businesses because they're not sales tax generating. You have the elimination of the home businesses. And, um, you are then able to drill down on the list to get to that ninety number. So we did do a detailed analysis, Liz and I, of looking at the, the universe and identifying based on who's eliminated, who's still in the program. Acting in as well that maximum revenue amount of the four million dollars.
And part of that also is the eligibility is that you have to be open in twenty nineteen. We have a handful that opened in twenty twenty. They also, you know, some changed hands. We talked about should current owners, you know, be, you know, eligible as opposed to giving checks to previous owners, as well as those that closed. And that closure wasn't attributed to COVID pandemic, they're not around anymore. So that adds to that number as well.
What's the reason for the limiting it to, we had to be in business in twenty nineteen?
Because the, um, provision, the, one of the goals of the program is how we're able to fund this is we had positive operating results in twenty nineteen. And the businesses contributed to that through their sales tax generation. So if, in order to have contributed to the surplus, you had to have been a business in twenty nineteen to do so.
Well.
So we, we really were focusing on it more than a grant.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that one of the, if I was sitting around in my family room reviewing this program, I would say I'd like to see the ninety businesses and, you know, who's getting what and so on. And, and that's gonna be in the warrant list, obviously. And so, you know, who, I don't know who twenty thousand is or whatever. But, um, again, I th, I think we should, and I, I don't want to delay this. I wouldn't, I wouldn't delay this because I think this is really a positive statement from the village to the merchants. But again, it's a huge range. I mean, you know, a hundred dollars, twenty thousand is a huge range, and so.
Dear one, um, there is a reason why there wasn't a spreadsheet. You do the detailed analytics, and, and there is a reason why we're giving the range instead of specifics because there is a confidentiality agreement that we signed with the state of Illinois to get access to this data. And it is, um, something that only specified staff at the village are privy to this data. And we take our responsibility to protect this data very seriously.
Yeah.
Provide the analysis, that's why we can't provide an amount with a name. And that's one of the reasons that we asked the bill, the businesses who are applying to acknowledge that they are going to get a cash disbursement that potentially could allow someone who understands the math to back into their number.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you. I agree with you on that, but, but ultimately it's disclosed through the warrant list. So the information will be there on who, who's receiving what. And, you know, I think that we're, this is just policy discussion here, and this is just kicking around, you know, what's the right, the formula here? And quite honestly, I, a hundred dollars, you know, I, I just think that's the minimum. I, I, we should, we should bump that. And what I'm, I guess what I'm saying, Kristin, if there are, if there are twenty, twenty businesses getting less than a thousand dollars or something like that, and to get them up to a thousand dollars, it adds, you know, four thousand dollars to the total, you know, we should consider something like that.
And without divulging any private, you know, confidential information, do you have an idea of, you know, how many of the percentage, how many are at the hundred dollars versus how many are towards the four million? I can't imagine a smaller business generating four million dollars having a two-month major business catastrophe because of the loss. Right, that's just off the top of my head, I'm thinking that. Because then hopefully they have more secure, more backup, more rainy day funds. But I'm kind of with Bob, you know, a hundred dollars, the people we're trying to save are the ones that are really scraping month to month or day to day.
I don't know if you can infer that, John, that just because the business is larger that they necessarily put away more money. You know, small business is small business is small business. And, uh, you know, the inference that maybe somebody who has two million in revenue has socked away more than somebody that's got a half million in revenue. I don't think you can make, you could draw that line. I don't think there's any, anything to support it, to be honest.
So maybe, maybe knowing the kind of the range as far as how many are in each category, maybe if that's possible, then maybe you do a sliding scale that the lower end people, to get them up to a higher number, is a taller percentage, if that's legal or? Right, in tiers, right.
You know, just to have two or three tiers, zero to a million, million to two and two to three, and just allocate the money in three tiers, zero to a million, you get.
Right.
Two thousand, you know, one to.
To determine that, we'd kind of have to know the categories.
But before we get too deep in, does anybody have any other questions that they?
I, I do.
Because I do want to get to the public comment on this too.
Right, right. Um, I, I know this, this is the section that's not, um, wouldn't qualify, but how many of our businesses of the one ninety-two are service businesses? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't know that exact number. I think that it's probably two-thirds, I would say. And service is, you know, we can dig into that number as well. Sort of parse out, you know, if you're interested in that data, you could parse that out so you can see exactly, you know, who is paying and whatnot. But I'm, would sort of refer to Kristin about is that, you know, based on who's paying sales tax or not, not sure if that would fall into the umbrella of that confidentiality and what we're able to dig into.
And the reason I'm asking the question is, is I think that it's, I think that for this particular program, I think it's great that we do a rebate for the people who paid sales tax. But I am curious about the number of service businesses that we do have that would not have access. And I, I just think it's important information for us to have. I just think it's important information for us to have.
I think you make a great point. There, the state identified that restaurants and salons and beauty, salons and spas were eligible for the big grants, which is a state promoted grant just for those services. So that is something that we promoted. The Illinois Restaurant Association had certain grants that they were able to promote. So some of those businesses were able to access funds inside of water. So that's also part of, you know, their support system and their financial assistance as well.
Okay.
What, a question, what if we decided we wanted to be more generous? Is there another, what, what is this, what further source of funds do we have to apply to this program to help these people out? And I'll explain my reasoning in a second.
So I think I have a question for Tim.
Actually I, I'll give it a first crack and then Tim could jump in. You're really talking about general fund reserves. Cause we've, we've, we've cut $4 million out of this budget to match the revenue impacts that we anticipate this year. So you're really looking at reserves are your only, in, in my opinion, your only place that you could go to look.
So what, what, what's available in reserves?
Oh, reserves, we're going to have that report for you on the 18th, trustee Collet Archie. But Tim, approximately $22 million in general fund reserves, of which six months are the minimum fund balance. And to be clear, the, the reserves have been saved for the significant infrastructure projects that we have going. And it to offset the impact to residents on debt service.
Farm water.
Yeah, I, I just, I, so I, my, my law firm of four people got a PPP loan that was a nightmare to get. And we got two months of wages for two employees and nothing else. And I had to wait two months to pay them. And I had to pay them over two months in order to not run afoul of the crap rules that the government tried to explain. It's the worst thing. I have no idea if I'm ever going to qualify, even though it just went to pay my employees. Now I have no money to pay my employees. So PPE, I, I, to, to me, there, this is, I, I would think that the economic problem we're going to have is going to be of a, it's not going to be a 10 year problem. It's going to be X number of, it's going to be a year or something like that. So I think that, that the, us being sort of the, the loans of last resort to these businesses in the village is the most, is the least we could do. And that's why I'm asking about the reserves. We're talking about a program right now, what a $400,000 is what we're, we're saying, and then we're talking about giving somebody a thousand dollars. That's like 15 minutes of employment for these people. It, it, it's 15 minutes of employment for me and I, and I don't qualify because I'm a service business. You're now looking at the conference room of my new business because I can't work downtime anymore. Can't afford it. So I mean, I think we're looking at small businesses of which I'm one. A lot of them, we, we don't qualify. I, I just don't think we need to fiddle while Rome burns for these people. I think that finding a way to be generous to help them is a good idea. And as you know, Washington argues about whether or not you're going to get $400 to pay, I don't know what, your pizza bill. We can, we can do more. I would encourage us to do more and not get tied up in, in, in too much complexity, but more in a sense of generosity. Because again, generosity, we're not talking about $10 million in a Lamborghini. We're talking about enough money that maybe gets people through the next bump, which is going to be this fall. You know, when, when that outdoor, when we, when, when restaurants can't be outdoors, if people start getting sicker and sicker. So I, I think we, we may have money in the general fund for other projects. But this is the worst emergency that's hit this country probably in its modern history, if not its history. And so I think we have to keep that in mind in terms of being available and helpful to our residents.
Okay, let's hold it right there. I wanted to save the policy discussion for after we heard from public comment, Jack.
Yes, sir.
So you jumped the gun on me there. We want to turn to that con- concept. Does anybody have any questions? And I mean, facts and figures, thousand cents, number questions, Kristen or Liz or Rob or Tim?
I, I just did have one and I'm, maybe it might.
Don't go with the policy, Rob.
No, no, it's about numbers. How many of the businesses, the 90 businesses got PPP?
Right. We don't know that number.
You don't know? Okay.
No, and I'll weigh in on the PPP thing a little bit more depth when we get to policy discussion because that plays for.
I, I do have one other, one other question.
Go ahead, Penny.
Um, it's, you talked about changing hands and I just wanted to understand that a little better. So that businesses that were in business, but were sold when? I mean, how does that work? I, and how many would that have affected? Just a handful, like two or three or what?
As far as we know, two or three.
That's not a big deal. All right.
Right. Not many.
Okay, Kristen. Public comment.
Okay. So first we'll recognize members of the audience. We have one member in the audience, Terry Dason is with us. Terry, I'm going to unmute you.
Can you promote her please too? So we can see her.
Sure.
Terry.
I'm promoting you. And you can share your video if you choose. I know you weren't planning on that. Where, where am I? Okay, there I am. Hi.
So you just need to, there you go.
That's better.
Terrific. So this has been a very good conversation and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that has gone into presenting this from Liz and Kristen. You did an amazing job. I want you, I made some scribbles here. Even if our businesses received PPP, that money has already been spent. Think about it. We're in the sixth month of this pandemic, six months. And no one is making, except our restaurant, I do want to say, but our retail businesses are not producing the kind of revenue that they used to. There are so many people in our community that are still cautious about going inside of stores, going inside of a door. And so they're not receiving the normal revenue that they normally receive from people that are shopping. And, and remember, women's clothing is a huge deal in our community. And women are not going anywhere. Where are we going? So we don't need anything else. Our businesses are continuously pointing out what other communities have done for their businesses. So doing this for our businesses, you will build an incredible amount of goodwill on top of what the village has already been doing for our businesses. You are incredible. I want to commend every one of you for helping our restaurants get up and running and outdoors. And this has been a big boom to our economy and our, our restaurants right now. Because they are able to survive. They're nervous. They're scared to death about what's going to happen in the future. And we know, none of us know what's going to happen in the future. You've also been great about social media and about supporting our businesses on, you know, takeout Tuesdays and, and helping us with the inside outside sale and helping us promote our, our retail in the next three months in a shop and stroll the shore. So I really appreciate your thoughtfulness to try to help our businesses. Jack is, Jack, that is awesome. I, I appreciate you thinking about being generous to these businesses. These businesses are suffering really badly. They're, they don't know where their next dollar is going to be. They don't know how they're going to make it. And without them having some sort of a boost, we're going to have an empty downtown. And that's not going to be good for any of our residents in the future. If we don't have sort of a vibrant business district. I, I like the idea of, um, you know, some sort of a flat amount when the businesses apply, because I do agree that a hundred dollars is meaningless, Bob. I think that our businesses need to have something that will help be substantially beneficial to keep keeping that. It is also correct about the PPP loans. They're were too nervous about applying because they didn't know how they would be to keep all their employees. And so, you know, Jack pointed out that he had a business that he had to pay the back pay and then try to pay the front pay, and then he's out of money. And that happened to a lot of our businesses. Remember, a lot of these businesses were closed for 69 days. And they still had to pay the rent. They had to pay the bills. They had to pay for their inventory that they had in, sitting in the store that wasn't being sold. You have to be aware of that. And today I was listening to WGN and they said, they were talking about what was, went on with the looting and the businesses in the, in the downtown. And, and it was commented on the fact that some of these businesses have insurance. They should just go ahead and, you know, not worry about the looting. And most small businesses only have 30 to 60 days worth of backup cash. And then they're done. So I just want you to know that whatever you can do to help out our businesses, to keep us working and keep them in business will be beneficial to all of us in so many ways. So I appreciate your thoughtfulness. I appreciate your attention to this. I'm so glad that you're even thinking of doing something like this. This will be good PR for all of you and all of our village. Thank you.
Chris, can I, can I ask Terry a clarifying question?
Sure.
Um, Terry, you said you, you would support a, a flat grant. Can you talk about that a little bit more?
Well, I like the idea. It's not put, pointed out, a hundred dollars to a business that won't be beneficial at all. So if you could tier it, or you come up with a, a number that would work. Everybody has high rent in this community. Everybody has staff that they have to pay. They have inventory. We have to think about trying to keep them through the bump. And you can, I know that Liz and I can come up with a list of people that are really struggling. And that are really on the edge, being on by the fingernails. And it's not by lack of trying.
So if we were to tier it, you know, what would be an appropriate floor in like five tiers, three tiers, you know?
Your idea.
Okay.
But I don't, you know, I'm, you know, this is just off the top of my head.
Right.
Hearing this and I'm liking it. And I think that would be really beneficial to our businesses.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Terry.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Kristen?
Yes.
Next.
There's no one else in the audience, but we did receive one written comment with regards to this item. It says, hello, it's obviously good news that the village council is evaluating a local business sales tax rebate. Since my location for Tuesday evening is in flux, I'm providing my input on the meeting materials via email. I recognize there are regulations dictating the financial approval process by the village council. However, I'm not an expert on them. If I understand the attached proposal correctly, each business rebate amount would be individually presented to the village council for approval. This would equate to publicly sharing the annual revenue of each business, which won't be popular. Is there a workaround? Submit X business names with one sum amount, desktop review, business name, but no dollar amount in the public agenda. If I misunderstood the village council approval process and agenda content, never mind. Cheers, Teresa. From Good Grace.
And would one of you on state like to respond to her concern?
So with regards to the approval process, there is not going to ever be with this program, a business name with the dollar amount on a public agenda. And as you know, when the warrants are approved, they're approved in one aggregate lump sum with the approval process. So at no time during the public meeting would a business name with the amount of the dispersment be discussed or listed.
Thank you. Any else in the comment section?
No, those were the extent of the content.
Okay, gang. Now it's policy time. Rob, there's one thing I wanted to remind you about from PPP. Because I, I can kind of sense where you're going with it. But the idea with PPP is it's, it's an expense side subsidy. Idea is that you have to spend the money to get it, meaning if you have, if you kept your employees employed, right, get the money. You could then pay them even though you had no revenue coming in. Secondly, I had one tenant who actually prepaid rent, which, which I loved him for, but because he was so confident that he was going to get the PPP and then it was covered. But the whole time, this poor guy was shut down and out of business, but he was still able to service his obligations to his landlord, which is really appreciated. So I guess I'm the beneficiary of his PPP. But there was, outside of some of these incidents, we saw in the national news of, of huge corporations or locally, some local nonprofits who have already collected their revenue for the year, and then were submitting for PPP on top were the ones that were a bit troubling. And, and I don't think we have those sorts of businesses in this pool of 92 that we currently have. It, it's different. That's all I can say.
I got it.
So, yeah, but aside from that, go for it. Bob, I see your point. And so go, you, you can lead it off.
I'll, I'll start it off, Chris, and I think we could micromanage this thing down for months and months, but you know, to Jack's point, you know, we could go further, but we're working within the context of a complete budget where we're looking at other initiatives down the road. So I'd be a little careful on going beyond what the staff has, has presented here. I, I think that tiering it, it's, it's got some feel good to it, but I would, I think it gets a little complicated personally. I would just put a floor. I would let Kristen and Liz and the others come back and just say, you know, there are 15 businesses or whatever that are under a thousand dollars or whatever the number of people feels right. And just put a floor on it. I mean, I don't think the person that's getting 15,000 or 10,000 is going to argue that you know, the little shop down the street is getting a thousand versus their percentage of 200. So I would just, I wouldn't overly complicate this. I think it's a good, I think it's a good program. I think we should move on it. Because, and, but I don't think we should be under the delusion that we're keeping these businesses surviving. We don't know where this is going. I mean, Chris, you've got tenants. Some are going to make it, some are not going to make it. It depends on how long this goes and, and so we can, we can do what we can do and we can come back for a second bite of the apple down the road. But I would not overcomplicate this. I would stick to their formula with a floor and, and move it along here so that we can pass this next week.
That's my. What would you think about, I mean, just curious, because this is the stuff that's popping into my head and just, you, you've thought about this a little bit. What would be your thinking on just a, a flat grant amount? That would be the same whether you were a 200,000 a year or, or a 3.9 million a year? Let's say like a flat $5,000 grant to any business that applied.
Well, I think that gets to your point though, Chris, that, that the bigger businesses may be suffering too. I mean, I don't know who these 90 businesses are. That's, I don't want to know. I don't want to see the list. I don't want to get too deep in the weeds. I'm trusting that Liz and Chris and Tim and Rob and the others have scrubbed this and looked at these businesses. There may be some that are, you know, going to get 15, 20 that are, that are on fumes right now. And so I, I wouldn't, I think this is, I think they've got a formula here. I wouldn't want it to go way beyond the 400,000 to start here, but I'm assuming for a moment here that, that there are only, you know, a dozen or whatever, that would be under some threshold that we would be comfortable with.
Sure.
And, and I would just, I'd go with this. And I think it's a good, I think it's been well thought. And I think it's a good, I think it's been well thought out. I think they've narrowed the businesses down. They've explained that to us in terms of services, firms that have not been in business for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. I get all that. And, and I would just, I want to move this to get it done. So we can get some checks in the hands of people that are willing to submit. And again, keep in mind, they don't, to get to the issue of Teresa's email, you know, they're going to sign something that says, basically, if they want to get this money, you know, to be transparent, that their information, not, not their sales information, but they are getting a check for X dollars. That is going to be, we have to reveal that. We have to submit that. We have to publicize that. And, you know, they don't want to do that, they don't have to do that. But, you know, I think we should move on this.
Gotcha. Andy?
Um, since we're not looking at the spreadsheet and we rightly don't want to, I just wanted to ask Liz and Kristin, is there a logical tiering? I mean, is there, is there a way that the businesses fall that if there would be a logic to it? Or is it really simpler just to go with like a floor and that percentage?
It's hard to determine because, you know, we do, we have the data, but we didn't look at it in that particular way. We're looking at it as sort of the, you know, the rebate formula. If it's something, you know, more than happy to take a look, see if there's, you know, if they fall into groups or not. I think it also gets to the question, which is very subjective of what, what amount is worth it?
Right.
You know, if you ask a business, they'll say fifty thousand dollars is worth it.
Right. Well, I just wasn't.
A hundred dollars, so.
It may, it may have struck you as you were putting it together, there was, there was a logical tiering. But if, you know, it's, it's sort of hard to get at it and there isn't an obvious.
Yeah, there isn't one, you know, based on what we looked at the data.
So Trustee Lanter, to also answer your question, we didn't look at it as a grant program. We looked at it exclusively as a rebate program. That's why the tiering didn't really make sense. We did at one point think about a floor. And we just thought, well, in trying to make this as administratively efficient as possible, don't put in a floor, just put in a cap and then ask for the minimum amount of financial information necessary to expedite a payment.
Right.
But still, but still have some certifications that there was an impact. And if they give us, you know, the amount of the, you know, the rebate, we have the data. So we can verify what their request is. So it can be reconciled pretty quickly the way it's designed now.
I think that, I think that makes sense. A follow-on question relative to Jack's point is, I, I think it makes sense to stick with this fund of money. But if things in the fall continue to be dire, again, not that we're offering a ton of money, but would it be possible to reconsider in the fall, coming back and using the rest of the fifty percent of the sales tax towards this? I'm just throwing that open as a point for future consideration.
Answer your question, I think the best we can at this point, Trustee Lanter. We, I don't think there's any village in our area that is going to be the financial lifeline for the brick and mortar businesses. We're going to be a supplement. It really, you know, state and federal governments are better positioned for that kind of support. However, given, you know, we know the severity of it. We're still trying to understand the duration, you know, when a vaccine may come, you know, normalcy resume. I think that we would, my suggestion to council would be to keep your options open. And if the severity continues and there's a need, we can certainly revisit this because we would have had the framework in place from before.
Right. Again, not a ton of money, but just trying to think whatever we can do.
So, Bob?
Yeah, a lot of great discussion. So initially I was thinking, you know, maybe there should be a floor. But if your fifty percent is a hundred dollar check, is that basically a service business that sold a couple of small things a year?
Yes.
So I think if we put a floor, then we have to start looking at helping the service businesses. If we're really doing this as a rebate, then I think it should be a rebate of the actual tax they paid. And then if it happens to come into somewhere down the road that we're looking at service businesses, then we have a different plan. And if the person doesn't want to apply for a hundred dollars, well, then they're not going to apply. But if it's all the sales tax they paid, if we're doing actual rebate, it's probably what we should stick with.
That's an interesting observation.
And Trustee, sort of in response to that, that something we looked at was considering what eligibility would be. Brick and mortar to us assumed there was going to be many more expenses to that. So those that had, you know, that rent and they were reliant on, you know, it's a retail, were reliant on those sales. If it wasn't a good year last year, is that something, you know, we should consider? Is that something that would make them not eligible? And I think, you know, to some of the other conversation is, you know, us sort of debating, sort of trying to figure out what, you know, what is a number that's going to be most impactful for them? So, you know, that's something to consider as well.
Yeah, because as we go through, you know, in the past year of overlay district approvals, they say, hey, if you sell some little retail, we'll make your business, you know, allowed to be in the overlay district. That could be one of the people, one of the businesses that may sell free widgets just because it's in their front window. So I really think that it makes sense to stick to the fifty percent rebate. Again, not knowing who those businesses are.
But don't we want these, don't we want all our businesses to survive?
Well, then we have to do the next.
Then we have to.
I think, I, I, I'll just weigh in real quickly. I like that this is structured as a rebate. Conceptually, it's clean and it's simple. We're giving people back the money they gave to us. If we do anything other than that, then we're looking at giving somebody else's money to somebody else. And that comes a whole different analysis that I think will cause us to micromanage this. So the cleanness of the rebate program is really good. The scalability of it, I think, is good too. Remember, it's not just the businesses who are hurting right now. Our residents are hurting. We may not see it as much because we're fortunate in this town, but there are a lot of people who are hurting. And we have to ask ourselves, I think, you know, would we do this? Would we take the money that we get from property taxes from a resident who's been laid off? Or who has had their job slashed or whose business is hurting? A local merchant? That's a tough decision that would, we're not equipped to handle quickly. And.
But don't we do things like that?
What I would suggest we do, I love, I love the way you structured this. I can tell a lot of thought went into it to make it something that's doable and movable. I also see that you've learned from watching what's happened in Washington by creating a program that can be executed, that has clear guidelines. But there's another lesson we can learn from Washington too, from what's happened with the relief programs, right? One is don't make them so complicated. Nobody knows what the hell is going on. But there's a good lesson, which is you don't have to do everything all at once. Right? So let's do this one thing that's the right thing as the next thing. And then let's take a step back and see where we are. Remember, this pandemic is nowhere near finished with us. Nowhere near. We don't, we, I mean, we just don't know, right? And we certainly don't know what the economic impact is going to be on us, on our residents, on our schools, on the parks. Remember the school district and the park district? We don't know how this is hitting them, but we have to take that into account in our finances. Because if our schools have to spend a bunch of money to make our schools safe for the kids, we need to be thinking about, and how are we going to spend more of our budget? We need to be thinking about how are we going to cut our budget?
Yeah.
Okay? And we have massive, massive things that we've been promising to deliver that the residents of this town have expected for like a hundred years now. Stormwater relief. A lot of those people in the flooded houses are people that are also hurting from this. And my God, you know, can you imagine being laid off and watching your basement fill up right now? So I just.
I don't know. I think I'd be, I think I'd be more concerned about pandemic.
Just let me finish. So, and then you can go off all you want. So I think the rebate program, the way it's structured is the right thing right now. I think it's, I don't think anyone is debating that this is a good program. I think what I'm hearing is maybe we want to do more. And that's cool. I'm up for that discussion. But let's do the one, let's not, you know, screw up the one good thing we've got here. Let's think about that next thing. Jack, I hear you want to do more. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. But what I would suggest is let's look at coming back at this with the budget. Maybe that's October-ish, when we have an idea of, we'll have a better idea of this pandemic. We'll have a better idea of what our capacity is. That would be my suggestion. And we can do some brainstorming in the meantime about what those additional things might look like. So I'm not opposed to doing more, but I think this is easy to get done now.
Well said. Well said. Rob, you got any more?
I'm good. I think I agree. I think any sum that up is good. And Bob as well, let's get this going. And let's, let's take stock of where the heck we are in another few months. And doesn't mean we're not going to do anything more, but let's just take stock where we are in a few months.
Can you get comfortable with that, Jack?
Yeah, I just, I, let me ask some factual questions now.
My questions and answers are over. We're on the policy discussion now. When you jumped at the beginning?
You dropped me at that time.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure, okay. So the people who are going to benefit from this are, you know, the big firms have probably, or the bigger places probably have good accountants and lawyers and bankers. The smaller places may not have access to that. And they may not, so the people that we're talking about are small, I mean, I would think are most of the smaller businesses. There's not that many. And our program isn't that, we're not talking about a huge portion of the sales, of the budget. So my argument in terms of generosity has to do with making a meaning, giving a meaningful amount of money to a business, which maybe allow them to make it until the next funding point, which maybe, maybe the federal government gets something figured out. Maybe the state government does. Where can people get to the next point to either? I don't believe that we're going to get them to the end of the pandemic or anything. I don't think we're going to get to the end of the pandemic until the vaccine comes through. And I think that's next spring, maybe. So I think that in terms of trying, I mean, we, we do have the resources to help people in a significant way. And I don't mean ten million dollars to each person. But when we're talking about, you know, a minimum amount to each business, I think that's a good idea because I think that that money is going to be used hopefully to keep these businesses going a little bit longer. Will the people in the village who are hurting now object to that? Maybe not. Because we make a lot of decisions as a council to take taxpayer money and apply it to a lot of different things. We pay a lot of consultants, a lot of money to advise us on how to do stuff. And, you know, we pay a lot of money to, to have roads built, to have infrastructure put in. I, I don't know that people would complain about it. And again, I'm not a genius when it comes to finance, but the, the, the money that we spend, and again, I'm not talking about ten million dollars. I'm talking about, you know, potentially using more money than we are right now and making that decision quickly. That's money, though, that we would be, you know, by the time the economy recovers, sales tax may be back up again as people go back into stores. So the bump that we take may not be a terrible bump in terms of the money we're spending of our friends and neighbors. But I think that the benefit to the village of trying to keep these businesses running and trying to keep their heads above water a little bit longer is worth the effort on our part. Again, we're not talking about huge amounts of money. We're talking, you know, in terms of the money that we're putting into this program. It's not stormwater, you know? And I would argue that it's, it's going to be helping a lot of people, you know, potentially as many as stormwater. If you really think about the raw numbers of people who get flooded in West Oneaka versus who are going to be affected by their businesses going out in downtown Oneaka and Oneaka's business district becoming desolate for, for potentially years. It could take years for us to recover from this if these businesses have to close up shop and leave. So that's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that, you know, let's turn the fire hose of water or the fire hose of money on all of these people. I'm saying there's, there's good reasons to, to, to try to keep as many of our businesses running as possible. So.
Thanks, Jack. The only, the only observation I have relative to that is the perspective that the taxpayers of this community, the residents of this community have been footing the bill for the debt incurred back in two thousand thirteen by the previous village councils. They're carrying the burden of, of stormwater improvements on tower. And they continue to pay into the stormwater utility every two months when the, when the water bill shows up. I don't know if you can say that about many of the businesses that we're looking to help. And that's, you know, the two masters we serve. I agree with you. I think helping these businesses is an important thing because they are an important part of our community. And I don't view them as second-class citizens. However, and yes, they do pay tax through the, their rental payments to their landlord, at least a component of it. So I understand all that. But at the same time, I think I would be hard-pressed to have a positive conversation with neighbors and people here on the west side of town who have been waiting since two thousand eleven to get some semblance of relief and have been paying into the stormwater utility since two thousand thirteen and tell them that now we're going to have to come back to them for just a little bit more because we decided to give some of that money that we had saved to help them out to the businesses. So it's, it's, it's a tough balancing act, Jack. I, the one thing that I do appreciate is the fact that Rob and Kristin and Liz, Tim have worked real hard to find something that's, I guess you could call it found money. That wasn't part of that collection process for stormwater or collection process for refuse collection or whatever. It was a little bit extra that came from conservative budgeting and an exceptionally good year in two thousand nineteen for the businesses. I think it's easy to give, give that money back because it's found. When we start to dig into the, to the piggy bank that we've, that we've established over many years and start to dole out that money, I think, I think we're going to leave ourselves open to a lot of questions and a lot of criticism from those that have helped build that fund. And that's, that's my only concern on that. Personally, I like the idea, just a second, Rob. Personally, I like the idea that, you know, we're doing something. Because unlike every other community who's simply giving back what they took in the first place, we're actually giving back something that, that we didn't take, but is, is fundamentally just like, it's like finding that five bucks in your pants before you throw in the washing machine, you know? And that's easier money in my mind for us to share and us to justify to the residents. Rob, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, President Rents. I was also going to say the generational contribution to reserves. There's a sense that that long-term accumulation is then reinvested in a long-term asset. That has been the general policy of the village. But the other point that, and we'll get into this more next week when we have the audit presented and another kind of a snap the line on the financials, is that we're currently building a budget. And this budget is going to be extremely difficult. I anticipate it to be more difficult than the Great Recession in trying to put it together, given the revenue hits across utilities, general funds, shared revenues, you name it. We're going to be doing that. We're going to be approaching this with continued conservative approach on the, on taxes. But it's going to be hard to balance this budget. And we're going to do our best not to have to use reserves to make the budget work. So there, there is that looming issue is what does fiscal two thousand twenty-one look like? And it's going to be a daunting challenge for staff to pull it together.
I think that's a great point, Rob. I, I think we all have to be very sober in how we look at this going forward. To Andy's point, there are a lot of people hurting that are residents. So I think we're being generous. I think we're being prudent. I think if we do it, we should do it quickly. So. Can I just add, add one last? And, and, you know, I think there's a consensus, it sounds like to me, around, you know, that this is a good program and so on. And, and I respect Andy's point on this and just kind of go with the formula and so on. But what I don't know, and Liz and Kristin, maybe you can just let me know on this, is the number of businesses that. is the number of businesses that we're talking about that would be in the hundred dollars to six hundred dollar range. I mean, I, because my sense is that even if you put some kind of a reasonable floor on this, and I, and and I don't think it would complicate it. It wouldn't complicate the, the administration of the program. It's, if you're under three hundred dollars, you get five hundred dollars, whatever it is. You know, I think that you would still be well under the four hundred thousand dollar mark. I mean, I don't think that is, is moving us above, and correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but my sense is that there are probably, again, a handful or a dozen of businesses that it might add four thousand dollars to the program, something like that. And again, I think a hundred dollars, you know, for a little business, and I don't think it's, it's a business that sells three widgets a year. I don't know what business that is. It's so small, but it may be a business that we want to keep in, you know, in the village. Um, so, you know, I'd go with Andy's point on the formula, but quite honestly, I, I think if we had some kind of a floor that was a little more meaningful, that didn't disrupt the, the aggregate total here. Um, you know, I think we should consider that. So that's my, my point.
Yeah, the problem I have with not sticking with the formula we have, because if you increase the formula to more than fifty percent of the money they paid in, which is kind of a whole thinking, well, then why wouldn't we have a flat fee for all the other service businesses? Because that, the hundred dollars, let's pretend at a hundred dollars, they're only selling thirty six hundred dollars a year, some unknown number to to collect two hundred dollars in taxes.
John, it might be, it might be three businesses. I don't, I don't have any idea.
Right.
How many businesses we're talking about here? I don't know who they are. I don't want to know who they are.
Yeah, but they're probably generally a service business with a very, very, very small piece.
The service businesses have been excluded.
No.
Oh, they're, these are.
This happens, this probably happens to be a service business that's three thousand dollars last year, the sales tax oriented.
It's, it's not.
Only way the governor collects two hundred dollars in sales tax.
If it, if it's, it's, my understanding is it's not a service business if it's paying sales tax. So.
But go back to one of the recent overlay district companies that moved in, that we've allowed to go in. Oh, yeah, you know, we may sell a T-shirt to go along with my business. They're not getting taxed on their service business, but they may be selling three thousand dollars in T-shirts a year. And that's where the tax is coming from.
I don't know.
Yeah, trustee Dearborn, and maybe another way of looking at it would be um a salon that is primarily taking care of hair, but they sell product, shampoo, conditioner, coloring, whatever that may be. There is a certain component where there may be some sales associated with a primarily service oriented business.
Is, is that where, Rob, the, is that where these small numbers are coming from?
Yes. There's a lot of them that are like that.
Nail salon selling nail polish.
Right.
Okay.
Requirements, we don't exclude service businesses. We just say you must generate sales tax.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that, I think that's consistent across the board of what we're trying to present here.
If, if, if that's, they are, that's, then I understand that.
Okay.
Um, I, I would like to throw a little bone out to Jack on this. Uh, I received a document from uh the Illinois Municipal League that I shared with Rob on, on August fifth, in which they indicated that they continue to go head to head with uh the Department of Commerce, Commerce and Economic Opportunity, DCOE, regarding amendments that would allow the state's federal cares funding to trickle through to municipalities who could then use that money in support of local initiatives like we're talking about. Come through yet, but they're working really hard on it, and I'll be happy to share this, this, this document with you guys. So you can see what's being worked on on a larger scale. Part of the issue is right now is that in Illinois, DCOE is saying, well, we really don't want to take on the feds and we don't want to worry about rulemaking. Uh, and there's been a lot of pushback by, by suburban municipalities to access that money and use it as a, as, as a stimulus similar to what we're doing. So there may be more money coming down the pipe that'll actually be earmarked from the state. And originally, I thought when we were talking about this, well, we'll just reimburse ourselves for the money that we've distributed. But we could also just to just pass it through if it comes our way and sweeten the program and enlarge it at that time. So there is an opportunity out there still in the works that uh could potentially provide additional funding sources as we move through it.
So I, I would like to um propose that we approve this program tonight as, you know, for what it is in terms of rebate. And then we continue to brainstorm and think about other ways that we can go about supporting our businesses. Because Andy, I agree with you. This is a clean program. Let's do it. Let's get the money out there. But let's recognize that this is just one way that we're trying to help businesses, and let's keep going to try to develop other opportunities and funding sources. So what do you think?
Great. You're good with that?
Yeah, I, I, I just, I just want us to keep in mind, we're, we're sort of on wartime footing. And and I think that we have to, to figure that's what, what we're dealing with is, is, is is, is something that's as bad as, as anything we've ever faced. And so our response to it should be, I, I, again, as I say, I'm not asking that we dive into the budget and cut out ten million dollars, but I'm saying if we, if we put double the amount of the four hundred thousand in there, and we're able to get money to people in a meaningful way. That's all I'm, I'm saying. I'm not asking for, to to trash the budget going forward. But again, all these terrible things that are happening to budgets and and everybody, it, it's a war. And and that's, and 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 then, and and it's destroying us the same way that one would. So, so I understand the argument. So, you know, I, I spoke in my piece, so.
I, I want to move this forward, Chris. So that's the consensus. I'm good with that.
John?
Yes.
And Rob?
Yeah, let's go forward.
Okay.
As, as stands.
Rob Bayhan and and Kristen and Liz, you've heard some of the comments. If there's any way that you might think of some of these things that could be rolled in easily or or make sense as far as enhancements, when you bring forth the uh, the ordinance for us or the enabling document, uh, you can share that with us or maybe give us an alternative at that time.
Okay.
I have one more thing of the village team, uh, is the communication of this needs to be really clear. So a residence don't get up in arms, that they realize that we're doing a, a fair and prudent thing. And I just don't want, I don't want a good deed to be punished unnecessarily or through miscommunication.
I agree.
Yep. And this is one step in what we're trying to accomplish. It's just one, one tool in the toolbox, right?
Yep.
Yeah, good.
So, but, but Rob, I understand your sense, sensitivity to that. And, and they actually, we have a uh a newsletter coming out that's kind of outlining a lot of the things that the village has been doing to support our local businesses.
Right, right.
And that's, would be an important place, Rob Bayhan, to uh, to clarify this and really give people a deep dive on how we're doing it and what the logic behind it was.
We, you have a space reserved for it.
Awesome.
I would say thank you to the staff that worked on this. This is, this is the result of good thinking. And again, this is just one piece, but thank you all so much. Um, I'd be, yeah, I'd be interested in, you know, having a conversation about more details at another time, but that's another time. So.
And thanks for putting up with me over the last few weeks. I appreciate it. So.
Our pleasure.
Well, that's all we had. Time for me to walk my puppy now, so.
Lose him again.
She's black and it is dark out, so you never know. We'll see. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Excuse me just a second. Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip? Trustee Kreip? I think that's a yes. Uh, trusty.
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Kalid Archie?
Yes.
Trustee Lampier?
Yes.
Thank you.
Person carries, we stand adjourned for tonight, guys. Thank you so much.
Night.
You all.
Here.